So hello, everyone. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, no?
Yes.
Small crowd. Wow. So we're going to get the meeting underway this evening. The first order of business, because we do not have a moderator in place until Election Day, is to do that this evening. So we have Julie Hanum, who has offered to assist the last couple of town meetings, has offered to take on that privilege this evening. So if I could ask for a motion, or I'm making a motion, that we nominate Julie Hanum, and I would like a second, please.
I'll...
I need you to raise your hands high with those green tickets, although some of them are around your necks, I see, so don't pull too hard. All those in favor? I'm sorry, I'm stumbling a little bit, I apologize. Please put your hands down. All those against, or in the negative. Seeing none, I will ask the chairman of our Board of Selectmen to please make a motion and cast one vote in favor of Julie Hanum as moderator for this evening.
I'll cast one vote for Julie Hanum. Thank you.
Second, please.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Seeing none? That is a unanimous vote for Julie Hanum. Come on up. Do you solemnly swear that you will honestly, faithfully, and impartially perform to the best of your ability, the duties for which you have been elected, in accordance with the general laws of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts and the bylaws of the town of Sheffield, to help you, God?
I will.
Thank you. If you just sign up, please. Do you want this to follow along?
I think I'm good.
Thanks. Okay. Good evening. It's a pleasure to be here again with you tonight. Our first order of business, would you please stand, if you're able, and we'll offer our pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please be seated. So welcome this evening. For introductions, we have folks at our head table here, our select board chair, Bob Kilmer, Nadine Haver, and Renee Wood, our town administrator, Rhonda La Bombard, our legal counsel, Matthew Fair, and we have our consultant from Weston and Sampson, who Nadine will be introducing with a different introduction in a few minutes. I want to thank Felicity, our town clerk, and her assistant Nicole Parker, and all of the town clerk staff for their role in putting everything together tonight. So we are here for one warrant article regarding property purchase for the highway garage. So the way the meeting's going to run tonight, I will introduce the article, the select board, Nadine will offer remarks on behalf of the select board, we'll have a consultant presentation, and then we will have discussion. So there's some housekeeping that will go with all of that, but I will do that before I actually get into the actual voting, because it will be a little while. So we'll proceed to Article One. Hold it. Let me find the right paper. To see if the town will vote to authorize the select board to acquire by purchase, gift, or eminent domain, and upon such terms and conditions as the selectmen deem appropriate, for general municipal purposes, the fee or lesser interest in all, or a portion of the land and improvements thereon located at 48 Sheffield Business Park, identified as Assessor's Parcel ID number 267-008-0000400201, and more particularly described in a deed recorded with the Berkshire South Registry of Deeds at Book 1636, page 46, and further, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate, borrow, or transfer from available funds, or any combination thereof, a sum of money for the acquisition of said property, and all costs incidental and related thereto, and further, to authorize the Board of Selectmen to enter into all agreements, execute any and all instruments, and take all related actions necessary or appropriate to effectuate the purposes of this vote, or take any other action relative thereto.
Ms. Moderator, I move that the town vote to authorize the select board to acquire by purchase or gift, and upon such terms and conditions as the select board deems appropriate, for general municipal purposes, the fee or lesser interest in all, or a portion of the land and improvements thereon located at 48 Sheffield Business Park, identified as Assessor's Parcel ID 8-4-2.1, and more particularly described in a deed recorded with the Berkshire South Registry of Deeds at Book 1636, page 46, and further, to appropriate the amount of $1,050,000 for the purpose of so acquiring said property, including the payment of all other costs incidental and related thereto, and that to meet this appropriation, the treasure with the general approval of the select board, is authorized to borrow said amount under and pursuant to Mass. General Law, Chapter 44, Section 7.1, or pursuant to any other enabling authority, and to issue bonds and notes therefore, and further, to authorize the select board to enter into all agreements, execute any and all instruments, and take all related actions necessary or appropriate to effectuate the purpose of this vote.
Is there a second?
Second.
So the motion is made and seconded. So rather than opening the floor for general discussion, at this time, I invite our select board member Nadine Haver to make remarks.
Good evening. Thank you for taking the time to be with us tonight. Tonight, the select board brings to you one single article related to the town's need for a new highway garage. For over 30 years, every select board has discussed this very challenging project without any real answers or plans. Why do we need a new highway garage? Well, as you can see behind me, this is the photos of our current facility. The building was built in 1964. It is 60 years old. It was built in haste because our previous garage was lost in a fire. It barely fits the needs then, and it does not meet our current needs to store and maintain our existing equipment, or any future equipment. The current Pike Road location is small, the building roughly 4,000 square feet on three acres of land, and does not allow for further expansion. It is in close proximity to the wells of Aquarian, who provides water to many of our residents. They have been requesting for several years that we move our fueling station away from this sensitive area. There have been fuel spills on this site that have required expensive remediation and concern for the protection of the public water supply. This current board made as one of its goals over the last two years to find a location and bring a proposal to the town for the needs of our highway department now and for the next 60 years. Each one of us has put in considerable time and energy over our various terms on this topic, Bob since 2020, Renee going back to the early 2000s, and for myself since 2014. The three of us feel this is the right time for our town, and this is the right property. Our objectives when we set our goal was to find a suitable location that will allow for the construction of a modern facility with room for future expansion, to find a suitable location that has low impact to neighborhoods, to find a suitable location that allows for protection, repair, maintenance of our equipment, most of which is currently stored outside in the elements. Our actions to date, past select boards have put out requests for anyone willing to donate land for this project. No success. We asked the state of Massachusetts for state land, that the state would be willing to give to the town for the building. This work was done with the assistance of Smitty Pignatelli. The state denied our request. We have investigated our own town property, finding the Berkshire School Road lot across from the school had some potential. Additionally, we examined the purchase and renovation of Custom Extrusions Building to be renovated into a combination highway and police facility. The costs on this renovation five years ago were $10 million. The board rejected that plan due to the extreme expense. We have investigated property offered for sale on Clayton Road and another on Polikoff. Neither met the objectives of what was needed. Last year, this board put time, money, and effort into finding a solution. We started with having a survey of the Berkshire School Road property. We examined the proximity to the wetlands and put a cutting plan together, and we hired a design firm to design a building to fit on that site. After several meetings to scale down the size and cost of a modern highway garage, the expense of that project was over $15 million, with $2 million going into site preparation alone. This numbering was staggering for each of us, but we also know this isn't going to get less expensive if we keep kicking the project down the road. While we were getting our heads around the costs, we were offered a four-acre site on Hewan Street for a very reasonable cost of $225,000. This site provided for significantly less site preparation costs without any wetlands issues. A few months ago, the voters gave the selectmen permission to purchase the Hewan Street land with ARPA funds, which has now closed and is owned by the town. As that transaction was closing, we learned of this property located at 48 Industrial Park Road, that was 4.32 acres, with a building of 8,100 square foot in size, close to the proximity of the Hewan Street property, but not adjoining the newly acquired land. The original asking price for this property in the industrial park was $1.2 million. We had our designer help to evaluate the site and the building to provide us with a plan to give the town a site where all of its needs could be met. The building will need renovations. Our design company informs us that to rebuild the current 8,100 square foot building today would cost in excess of $6 million. We believe this is a very good opportunity for the town. The site meets the objective of having room to expand, limits impacts to the neighborhoods, gives us the space needed to expand for storage and maintenance of all of our equipment, much of which is now stored, as I said earlier, outside in the elements. The board has entered into a purchase agreement for the site and building at a price of $1,050,000. I know you have questions, and I ask you to hold them until we're done with our presentation. One question I know is that what will happen to the existing site on Pike Road? We are discussing maintaining that location for the ability to have storage of equipment not needed on a daily basis, as well as the land to dispose of storm debris. We currently have no place to store storm debris, or any other materials that the highway department may need. Another question, I'm sure, is what will happen to the four acres on Hewan Street? There are several options. We are in the process of removing the collapsed home and looking at options for the property. It is an investment for the future. I think it was Bob Kilmer that said to me, "Land is a good investment. They're not making any more of it." We are here tonight to request permission to purchase this site in the industrial park and the existing building at a cost of $1,050,000, with monies to be borrowed, using financing options allowed by municipalities. If you, the voters, approve this purchase, we will engage an architect to design and put out to bid the renovations and the cost of adding a second building, Salt and Sand Shed and Fueling Island. We will be coming back to the voters with a fully designed and cost plan for expansion and further development for this site. I'm going to ask John Como of Weston and Sampson to share their concept for how this site can meet the needs of today and into the future. When John is finished, I will share with you the financing options, and then we will open the floor up for questions. John?
Thank you, Nadine, and thank you, Board of Selectmen. My name is John Como, I'm here from Weston and Sampson, and we've been working with the town and with the Board of Selectmen and the building committee for the last year and a half now, to help them and the highway department to come up with a program for a new facility. As Nadine mentioned, the photos of the existing facility, I'm sure everyone's familiar with, served the town very well for the last 60 years, but no longer does so and can't be seen to serve those needs going into the future. The site is 48 Sheffield Park, and it's an industrial-zoned area. It's already developed, which is a huge benefit. Site development costs would be less here than for a site, as Nadine mentioned, across the street. It currently has an 8,100 square foot building on the site. It's a pre-engineered metal building, and this is really the type of building that we see these days for highway departments and public works facilities, mainly because the frame type allows for open bays and high bays that you can use to maintain vehicles, lift vehicles into the air. This building already has overhead door openings that can be used for service base. It also has an office setup and bathroom facilities and storage areas. Some photos of the interior, the high bay storage area with the overhead garage doors. Now, you could lift vehicles to their full height to service them. Office areas would need minimal renovations to serve the needs of the highway department. Workshop and storage areas are already built in, they would just need small modifications. The plan on the left is the existing building as it sits now. The plan with the colors is the renovated space as proposed. Again, a total square foot of 8,100. Purple areas are maintenance areas. Orange areas are employee facility areas, muster room and locker room. Green is storage, and yellow is kind of office admin-type areas with bathrooms. As part of the program, that building would serve about 8,100 square feet of about a 15,000-square-foot program that was developed, and reduced originally from about 24,000 square feet. So we worked very hard to kind of bring the size down and recognize just needs and not wants, so we went through multiple iterations to come up with the right program. This program would be for vehicle storage. This would house the multimillion-dollar town investment in their vehicles and equipment, which a lot of it now sits outside, unfortunately, subject to the elements and reduced service life. The blue area is a vehicle wash, and this, again, is another element that would increase the longevity of the town's fleet, increase the response time, and then also increase service to the town. That's about a 6,000-square-foot building. The site now with the layout, the concept layout, is the original building in orange, the new building in blue, a new salt shed, a new fuel island with above-ground storage tanks rather than underground storage tanks. We feel that this site would also allow for future expansion. Just some photos of how this might look, potential amenities, the salt shed, vehicle wash bay, and a fueling island. And the costs. Now, when we looked at the original program, an all-new facility of this size would be about $10.4 million. Savings realized by reduced site development cost and renovating of an existing building would save about $3 million. So the renovation is still required, it's not inexpensive, there's HVAC and ventilation upgrades, plumbing upgrades, upgrades related to industrial equipment needs, compressed air lines, fluid distribution systems, so forth. But considerable savings over all-new. And that is the end of the presentation. Thank you.
So now let's talk money. Our town administrator and I have had several discussions with our financial consultant regarding borrowing options. He has run several borrowing scenarios for us and given us numbers based on today's interest rates. We are hopeful that rates will decline as we get closer to financing, but we're being very conservative with our presentation tonight. For this purchase, we will do a short-term borrowing for the purchase of the property and the building. This will be done on a one-year, short-term bond at an estimated interest rate of 4.5%. The year will give us time to engage an architect to design and spec out the project. Whoever is chosen to be the architect will put a request or proposal together for the next phase of the project, which is the renovations to the existing building. John has covered what renovations will be needed. There will be an interest payment due in May of 2025 of approximately $114,000, which the select board voted last Thursday to make that payment with ARPA funds. This portion of the project is estimated to increase the average home taxes by $58 per year. Weston and Sampson has estimated the cost of the renovations at approximately $1.5 million. Once we have firm bids, we will come back to the voters for another special town meeting for permission to do another round of short-term borrowing for approximately $1.5 million for the renovations. We are hopeful that that work will begin this coming fall. The estimated increase of taxes at the end of that phase would be $100 to $183 per year. An increase on your taxes of $183 per year. The next phase would involve the construction of the second building, approximately 6,800 square feet for storage of all of our equipment, adding the Salt and Sand Shed and the Fueling Island. Right now, this phase is estimated at a cost of $5.1 million. We will again need another special town meeting to approve that financing. This is likely to be 18 months to two years from now. Our estimated cost for the entire project, including land and building purchase, is $7.63 million. The increase in the taxes at the end of the project would be $250 per year per household. We are looking at all of this as a phase-by-phase approach. We do not want to borrow more money than we need, and not until we need it, and at the lowest possible rate. The estimated tax increases would be for 30 years. We are exploring USDA grants that might be available to the town. We have been quite successful in obtaining those grants for things like police cruisers and the senior van. With Renee's help in this area, if such grants are available, we will do everything we can to get assistance with funding via this or other grant possibilities. In conclusion, the first estimate that we got on the Berkshire School Road property was $17 million to build. We anticipated the Hewan Street buildout would run between $12 and $15 million. This project is currently estimated at $7.63 million without soft costs such as designs and contingency. The board is hopeful that the soft costs may be able to be paid from other sources, such as free cash, ARPA, or our stabilization fund. We feel what we bring to you tonight is the very best option available to the town and to the voters at this time, and at this point, we'll be happy to answer any questions anyone might have.
So if anyone has any questions, and you wish to approach the microphone, you need to state your name and your street address? That would be one thing for sure.
William Kelsey, 397 Clayton Road. I moved to Sheffield to retire, and these little things that come up, these little expenditures, are kind of unnerving. I see your point on what the costs are for building a town garage, but I think you're pretty extravagant. I've worked in the construction field all my life, and I never knew the graders had to be kept in garages, and front-end loaders had to be kept in garages. All that yellow equipment generally is able to stay outside. It's convenient to have it inside where it's nice and warm, but it comes with a price tag. So I think, my opinion is, the Hewans Road is better, and we could build a smaller garage for just the trucks to plow snow. And I have a second question. You're moving over in my territory, and you can drive a point down anywhere and get water at 18 feet. So we're building a salt shed in an area where it's my water, and this is how it is in this world. The country that has water is the one that's going to survive, because there's plenty of places in this country where there's no water to drink. So we have a drinking water problem where the garage is now, but you're astubating by moving the garage over into my neck of the woods, and it makes me very worrisome. When I was in the real estate market looking for a place to live, after I sold my house five years ago, I picked three places, two in Falls Village, and their wells were contaminated. So our drinking water is a very big item to be protected. Now, this salt shed, I understand you can build a mat, you can dig a hole, and put a mat under the salt shed to protect any runoff. It's not that part that I'm really worried about. It's the dribbling, loading it into the dump truck, the dribbling that goes on. The little places here and there. Salt is a very bad thing to have in the water. When you're diabetic, I can't have any salt at all. Thank you very much.
Thank you for the question about the salt shed. Salt sheds are, you know, today, they're designed that they can go in sensitive areas. They are designed to contain the salt with concrete, as you mentioned, a mat foundation and slab inside the building. And with a newer site and site drainage, we attempt to kind of contain that from getting into the groundwater. So it's licensed by DEP, and we really haven't run into any issues in other communities with the salt, our newer salt sheds.
The other thing I want to mention is that when they talked about the bay that would wash the vehicles, John, you may want to comment about the structure that's underneath that bay that catches the water that runs off from the equipment, please?
The salt shed also acts to kind of reduce the salt. Right now, trucks are sprayed off either in the garage or outside, they have to be sprayed off. A new wash bay would have a tight tank arrangement so that any drainage would get collected in a tight tank. It would have to be emptied and then disposed of, but it wouldn't get discharged into Septics Field or into the groundwater.
We feel that what we're proposing is actually safer than what we currently have, to answer your question.
Yes.
My name is Susan Donahue, and I live at 200 East Stoll Road, diagonally across from where this building is.
Susan, do you have your voter card?
I do.
Okay.
Do I need to bring it?
Well, is there someone sitting by you that can show us your voter card?
Yeah.
We're a little bit opposite of how we try to do housekeeping at the beginning, so I apologize.
Okay.
Thank you.
So I have concerns also. Everybody on East Stoll Road has a well. I have a well, so I have concerns that I'm... I don't feel that you... I don't feel comfortable with the way that that issue has been addressed, or you propose to address it, because all my neighbors have wells. And my concerns are also to my property value. I can see the building that you're proposing to buy. I don't think anybody up there lives in this neighborhood. I don't think anybody up there lives in this neighborhood. And also truck traffic, increased traffic in the neighborhood. It is, it is an industrial park in a residential neighborhood. So there's lots of houses on that street. There's lots of people that live on that street. And right now, we have a lot of trucks coming through the neighborhood that probably shouldn't be. I don't know what the zoning is. The plaster in my living room is cracked from the weight of the truck traffic. So I'm not really looking for an increase in truck traffic or traffic in general. So those are my concerns as a person who lives in that neighborhood. I will not be voting for the project. I don't want it there. Maybe somebody else lives in a neighborhood where they would want it. But as a person who pays taxes and lives very close to that site, I don't support it. I think you should take it somewhere else. I don't think it should be even, I don't think it should be in a neighborhood. I mean, I don't know that any of you would be voting for it in your neighborhood. That's what I have to say.
So what we're asking you to vote on tonight is the purchase of the land and the building. We're not voting on the renovations. We're just asking for permission to purchase the land and the building that exists now. So I understand your concerns. We're doing everything in our power. Every person in Sheffield gets their water from a well. Even Aquarian provides water through wells. And the situation we currently have is not as careful and as safe as what we're proposing.
Bonnie Silver is 15 Bowlow Road. I think my question, Nadine, really relates to what you put forward financially. So initially, you spoke about the short-term loans and it would be approximately 50-something dollars added and then 150. And then the 30-year term one, you said approximately 250.
Correct.
Is that, the short-term loans disappear?
They get rolled, they get rolled into the final package.
So the final package is, so it's not cumulative?
Correct.
Okay.
We can't roll the interest in. We have to pay the interest annually. So this first-year bond that we're looking to borrow, the 1,050,000, is a one-year bond with an interest payment due in, if we do it in May 1st, it'll be May 1st of 2025, a year from then. And at that point, we would then be looking at rolling the principal of that bond into the next bond of 1.5 million. So at that point, we would be borrowing 2.5 million short-term until we get the work finished. And then that may go into a straight 30-year mortgage at that point while we work on the building and the salt shed and the fueling island going forward. A lot of this is just going to depend upon how quickly the construction happens.
All right, so that answers it. We're not talking that it'll be a $500. It's, you've rolled, okay. The second is a question in terms of the people who are involved in our highway department currently. Have there been surveys, discussions, et cetera, with them related to work environment conditions and what they would want to see in a facility?
We've actually, we've had the good fortune to talk to two highway superintendents, the board of Renee, myself, and I can't remember who was there before with us, but we spoke with Ed Pickert and kind of came up with what his dream was. And, you know, it was his dream that the highway garage be located in an area where the minute they pull out of the garage, they can drop plow and start working. Because originally, we had been looking for state property on Route 7. We can't plow Route 7, so we'd have to drive a distance to start working. And as far as the condition of the building, currently, they have no shower facilities. So if they have a really ucky day, and they have a lot of ucky days, they can't shower before they go home. And we're hoping to have a locker room that will provide a shower. There will be a room in the muster room for them to be able to put some cots in to be able to take a nap while they're out plowing. Sometimes, you know, these guys are on the road 20 hours.
Right, exactly.
You know, I mean, it's a lot of work. We didn't have that much this winter, but it's a lot of work for these guys. And to send them home to get rest, it becomes a little more efficient to be able to have them sleep there. We're not putting in luxury accommodations. There'll be no walnut lockers. You know, we're building this as efficiently as we can and as affordably. They will not be sleeping at the Hilton. You know, they will have what they need. Right now, they don't even have much of a kitchen. I think they have room for a microwave and a coffee maker. Be nice if they had a place to wash their dishes. So we're really not talking anything extravagant.
But you answered the basic question is they were and have been consulting.
Oh, yes, and Dave is here. Dave is here. He's sitting in the back. Dave, are you happy with the proposed building plan? Thumbs up, he's giving a thumbs up. So, you know, we have had a lot of input from the highway department on this.
And my last question is, in any way, can this facility be dual-purpose for, or triple-purpose for any of our other town needs?
Well, when we were looking at the custom extrusion building, that was a 41,000-square-foot building. And, you know, our dream was to have police and fire and highway all in one location. That was a ridiculous price of $10 million, and that was five years ago. That was before the COVID increase of cost of construction. So that in itself was a pipe dream and we left it there. So the building that is currently there will meet our immediate needs. The new building would provide for future growth and more equipment storage. I don't disagree with Mr. Kelsey's concerns about not all equipment has to be stored inside. You're correct. But the more equipment that you can store inside, the longer it lasts. And these trucks don't come inexpensively, you know. Millions of dollars of equipment, you know, help keep our roads running.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, Bonnie.
You're welcome.
Nadine, if I could add just a little bit. I've looked at this for six years and when I got on the board for my second, you know, six-year term, made a promise to myself that this thing would be at least voted on by the time I left. And that's, I'm leaving in two months, so I'm glad to see that this is going to be voted on tonight. I have looked for six years. I've gone through every one of those scenarios that Nadine went through. And I'm just going to say that our highway equipment that you pay 250,000 or more for every time you buy a major piece of equipment, it can't fit in the current garage. It sits outside. It can't be washed properly. If you could go over and Dave can get up and say that I'm correct on this. I have seen equipment that the guys have been washing and it is full of rust. And that's because it hasn't been maintained. It's the same as my Honda. I didn't maintain it and now it's rusted and I'm going to have to get another car. So look at this not only as the right thing to do for your investment, but I'm going to tell you, in my heart, if we pass this up, we are not going to find another situation as good as this. And I 100% believe this. Someone in this town is always going to be affected where a garage goes. We looked at Polikoff. We looked at Berkshire School. We're looking, you know, the Lauded Hewins. We looked at custom extrusion. This building is a bargain. I'm not sure that everyone realizes the incredibly expensive hoops and loops that municipal governments need to go through, but we just can't put up a Morton Building for 225,000 like you might be able to if you needed it for your business. We have to go out to bid. Everything is subject to procurement. Then when they actually build everything, it is subject to prevailing wage, which means what they pay in Boston and a laborer gets $40 or more. So you're not building it as you and I, as a homeowner, would. That's why some of these prices just seem outrageous. I think John, who is with Weston and Sampson, one of the most respected architectural firms in this area, you know, has pegged that building that I'm hoping you will all vote yes for tonight at over $6 million if we were to build it. So we've really done our work here and I hope that you will stand with us and approve this building because I truly don't think we're going to find anything that is in good a shape, so conveniently located with, and I'm sorry for the woman who lives near it, but so conveniently located with this little impact unless you happen to be the neighborhood. And I'm sorry about that. But it needs to go somewhere and this is really a good, good investment. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Steve Feldman. I live at Plymouth Lane, number seven. Couple of questions about the site specifically and a little echoing with this previous question you just had. The fuel island and the wash bay and stuff. I'm sorry, the fuel bay and the, and the, the fuel island and the wash bay, could those be used by fire department and police department to fuel and clean the vehicles?
Yes.
It's diesel and gas?
Yeah, our fueling island currently is used by police, fire, senior center, as well as the highway garage. And there is both, yes, diesel and regular fuel.
And how many lifts are you planning to put in for maintenance?
At least one. And they could be mobile lifts, so they could be moved out of the way when not in use, so.
The height is clear enough for?
Usually you want to get six feet up and, you know, you need another 13 feet for the vehicle. So you need about 20 feet or so clear building envelope to lift a vehicle so you're not hitting any HVAC mechanical equipment above.
Okay.
There is that room in this building.
Okay. And with the previous, the site that you bought on Hewins, I thought I read that there needs to be asbestos relief?
There is a, there is a building that has collapsed that has asbestos there and we are working on getting that removed with proper remediation.
So once it's remediated, then you'll, you know, going forward, decide what to do with the asset?
Right.
Whether to sell it, build it, you know?
Sell, build, affordable housing, you know, there's, there's many options, obviously.
Okay, and then finally, on a little, maybe it's finance, but where does this money from cannabis, can any of that be used for any stuff in here? I think there's a good amount of money that's.
Yeah, there's, so let me just tell you that the cannabis money goes into our general fund and it balances out to free cash. So when we come to town meeting and we say we want to buy a highway excavator for 100,000 from free cash, we're spending the cannabis money along with anything else that rolls into free cash. And what rolls into free cash is what doesn't get spent in the normal budget on an annual basis. So we also are not getting the kind of cannabis money that we initially thought we were going to be getting because of the new rules that the Cannabis Commission has put out and the number of lawsuits with cannabis companies filing lawsuits to get their host community agreement fees back. Sheffield opted to stop collecting those host community fees last September to be prudent so that we didn't end up in a lawsuit having to pay back. And so far, we haven't had any lawsuits. So I think our cannabis funds, Rhonda, is it around 300, 400,000 a year?
Probably close to that.
So what we end up receiving is the excise tax from the one retail sales place in Sheffield and that comes to us from the state.
Okay, so it wouldn't really make much of a dent.
It wouldn't make much of a dent.
Okay, well, thank you very much and I appreciate all you've.
You're welcome and thank you for your questions.
Seems like this, you know, try to do the best with the cost.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Jenny Russell, 98 Berkshire School Road. I applaud your work, your research and the highway department. Amazing. I do have a question about groundwater, particularly insofar as fuels and salts are involved. And over the years, I've been interested in groundwater research and would love to know if there is plausible and comparable drilling, observation, onsite data from other municipalities in similar soils, similar groundwater recharge areas to find out what the average spillage or drainage or contamination, plumes of contamination might be. We've had, on these soils, we have infinite number of possible contaminants, not only from highways and gas station, from agricultural and factory inputs, but from salt as well. And I'm just interested to know in vaguely similar localities, what those data points might be and what we could learn from other municipalities in similar soils. So that's my question. It's a sort of engineering question and that's great to get some answers. I don't want to spend more money on more research, but if there is available research, it would be lovely to know. So to reduce fears which are real. Thanks.
Yeah, actually, I can't answer that question tonight. I could find out that information for you, but I don't have that information available.
So Jenny, the way that this is to be designed, if it's approved by the voters, rather than the underground gas tanks that we have over at the current garage, these will be above ground. So that's a precaution in itself. Above-ground gas tanks have to be inspected on a regular basis. There's also, we had a little accident, and it was a little accident, at the current highway garage where some fuel was spilled. I'm not going to say how much it ended up costing us, but that's like a mandatory reporter. You get somebody out there to clean it up. There's a whole drill. There's people that come out, they dig up the soil. They have to do testing, and John knows much more about this, but they have to do testing within, you know, until they find that there is no contamination. And just for a very tiny spill, it was quite expensive, to be honest. And this is something that every highway garage crew knows about and it's enforced automatically whether it's at a public facility or a private facility. I think also one thing that might be interesting with our changing weather is that I don't know what's going to be the salt requirements going forward. It seems to me like we, you know, was there any snow this year? Were there any big storms like we've had five, 10 years ago? If they were, I missed them. So I think we're going to see less salt and I think the highway crew, as there is a tremendous concern about salt on roads and what's it doing, and I've read about this myself. I think as new practices come out, Sheffield has usually been very much in the forefront and I believe they will adopt those practices as they come in. I think that's all that can probably be said at this moment.
Thank you.
Jeff Cullingwood, 703 Polikoff. I just wanted to check if anyone, like actually check to make sure the zoning is correct for the use in the business park?
Yes, it has been checked, the zoning. The question was the zoning, has the zoning been checked for? The question was the zoning, has the zoning been checked for the usage in the business park? So, but yes, it has been checked.
I guess I was just wondering, when they established the business park, was there any criteria for the businesses, which this isn't a business, I mean, it's a use, highway use, is there any contradiction in any original formation of the park?
The use of the business park has changed dramatically since Mr. Tepper bought this building. It was light industry, and I believe everyone that has been there either has their building for sale or has sold it. It's gone into primarily a lot of warehousing. Mahawi Tent bought the Euro Precision building. There's the staging company that's across the street from the Tepper building. The Select Board several years ago approved the use of one of the lots as a storage facility. There's one building that, that I'm not sure what's happening with it. The Select Board is the one who controls any questions on the covenants for the business park. So I think the problem has been resolved.
Will there be any changes in the type of business category? Is it general business now, or which, which one is it now? There's a hundred-foot offset for the parking and so on. It would seem to me if that had been relaxed, it might ease up the, the movement on the facility.
At this time, the Planning Board is going through a review of setbacks in the general business. The general business was established with a hundred-foot in front, seventy-five foot on the sides and rear. Right now, they're proposing to reduce that to the same as most all the rest of our zoning with a forty-foot setback from front and twenty-foot setbacks from the rear.
So in this site, which is the front and which is the rear?
They would actually, that is, that is a good question. I would, and here, you know, that's an assumption, is the front of the existing building would be considered the front setback, and then the other three areas would be side and rear.
I would say that the setbacks were determined when that business was built. I'm not quite sure where the front is. I think the front is in the loop, not necessarily, you know, facing the street. But when that building was built, it had to meet all the zoning requirements per the zoning bylaws and the building inspector, and it had to receive a special permit from the Planning Board. So this proposal is looking to take over that building, so at the same time, it would take over the approvals that were given to it almost twenty years ago.
I don't think that's the issue. The issue would be any of the new structures going in would, would maybe relax if that's... Would the town be having public meetings for the future improvements?
Yes.
So the towns, so townspeople can look at the breakdown of costs and so on?
Yes, the only thing we're asking for financing tonight is for, is for approval for the purchase of the property with the building on it. The, the second phase will be the renovations, we'll come back to special town meeting for that, and then a third phase later, if we're going to add the extra building, salt and sand shed and the new fueling island.
My question was, as long as the town folks are invited to look at the, you know, cost breakdown in the, in the future?
Sure.
I mean, there's got to be some informational meetings on this in the future?
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm. Yes.
Hi, Sue Funk, Polikoff Road. Can you clarify what happens if we tonight approve the purchase and then it's disapproved for funding of the next stage?
Well, what we're asking tonight is for the funding for the purchase.
Correct.
The next phase of the funding, the next phase would be requesting funding for one and a half million to renovate the building. If we don't get approval for the one and a half million, then we'll use the building as it is and, and, you know, make improvements as, as we go along, I suppose. The building is twice as big as what we currently have, so as is, it's not perfect, but it's better than what we have.
Okay.
Lee Butella, 26 School Street. First of all, I want to commend the Select Board. I think it's very hard to come in front of us after a brief period of time to acknowledge that a better option came along, and I'm appreciative that you're doing this. And I hear a lot of people being very concerned about what might happen on the property in terms of runoff and things like that. And I guess what I would like as a question to that is, we'll be having to apply current day standards to runoff and all these things that are probably highly regulated by government at the federal and the state level, and I'm assuming that you feel comfortable that that provides us with protections?
Certainly more protections than what we had in 1964 when we built what we have now.
I was built then too, and I'm running off, so I totally understand. Thank you so much.
Just a quick one, since Sheffield's at the forefront.
Bonnie, you need to identify yourself again, please.
Bonnie Silver's 15 Bowwell Road, still. Are we planning on having electric charging stations perhaps for all of our municipal vehicles?
Not at that location. We are looking at electric charging stations for the town, but not at that location at this time. That doesn't mean that, you know, down the road, if we start having electric vehicles that, that the town is using, that we might not consider that. But the board is currently working on electric charging stations for the library and town par, town hall. We haven't, we haven't committed to those yet, but we're still working on the pricing.
So if we get to the planning point on this, I hope they would at least look at what that might entail, because as things by federal law change, it might behoove us to look at that.
Yeah, thank you.
Bonnie, at present, there hasn't been the electric vehicle movement into these heavy vehicles. They're just starting, kind of starting to become out, and with the grants that we're looking to for the EV chargers for the places that Nadine mentioned. I think the state may have them around for a while. There's a real big charger push for that. I also really want to caution that the precautions that we are taking, both regarding salt, sand, and washing of the vehicles, are so many times greater than what they are right now. The wash station itself is a closed system where the water is captured and then it is pumped out, so it is designed to capture every bit of salt and sand that is coming, and other junk that's coming off the vehicles, and it will be designed to be big enough to wash everything, and some of this stuff is really big. The other thing I wanted to just correct is that the purchase price is one million fifty thousand dollars, not one point five, one million fifty thousand dollars.
John Jasmine, 466 Clayton Road, Ashley Falls. I got a couple of questions. What's the standard width of your plows on your trucks? Anybody from the highway department here? Width, yeah. Eleven feet. How wide are the doors on that building?
Not wide enough.
Okay.
They would need to be widened.
Yeah.
Fourteen feet minimum, sixteen feet would be better.
I work at Euro Precision, so I look at that building every day. What is the power requirement for municipal garage? Do you need three-phase? Is there a three-phase in that building?
There is.
There is? Okay. I know, because my boss has three-phase in his building, but he has, he had a problem with National Grid trying to get that much power. And I wasn't sure that all the buildings in that park had three-phase.
I don't know if all of them do, but this one has.
What's the average valuation of a house in the town of Sheffield that you're basing everything on?
Our finance gentleman sent me some numbers yesterday, four hundred and fifty-eight thousand and change.
And tax, and what would the tax be on that four hundred and fifty thousand dollars right now? On a quarterly basis?
Does anybody have a calculator?
I think the gentleman is just asking the additional tax.
Are you talking about the additional tax?
No, just what the bill is right now.
I'm guessing my house is around that, and it's about forty-one hundred dollars a year?
Yeah, okay.
Julie just did the math, and I'm going to trust her, and I can't read it, but she says, it says fifty-three eighty-one, oh, if I put my glasses on, am I... I wasn't sure where my glasses had gone to, I was up and down so many times. Fifty-three eight, eighty, five thousand three hundred eighty-one dollars and fifty cents.
So...
So at the end of the project, it will be, if all things stay the same, you'd be looking at two fifty, add two fifty to that. Five thousand six hundred thirty-one dollars and fifty cents if everything gets approved to do the next two phases after the purchase.
Okay, fifty-six. So sixteen hundred dollars a quarter, something like that? Fifteen hundred a quarter?
It's...
Fourteen hundred?
Fourteen oh seven per quarter.
Hey, I graduated from here, okay?
Fourteen oh seven per quarter.
Okay. All right. So basically, so this whole thing is going to increase our taxes by two hundred and fifty dollars a year?
Now, let's just say that at today's market, that's the assumption, at two hundred and fifty dollars a year for the average home. I'm hoping that the tax rates go down, and I've been talking to this financial guy, his name is David Eisenfeld, and he's from Unibank, and I, he's, he's very optimistic that we'll see lower rates, and that means it wouldn't cost as much for each of us as taxpayers. The thing is, is if we don't do this, it isn't going to get any cheaper. And that's kind of the problem, you know, it just, the cost of things are extremely high. I think Renee mentioned that, you know, we can't build things in a municipal world like you and I could in our own private property.
Yeah, it's unfortunate.
You know, we can't throw up a, we can't throw up a Morton building for two hundred and twenty-five thousand. There's layers and layers and layers of regulations and requirements, and it's a public building, and, believe me, Bob Kilmer went through this with a fine-tooth comb trying to find a cheaper way to do, to do this.
Yeah, that's unfortunate, because you have that other piece of property...
Yes.
And it would be ideal.
But the cost there would be twelve to fifteen million, where the cost for the entire project, including the renovations and the new build-out, would be seven point six million. So there's considerable benefit of purchasing a piece of property that has a building on it now at a million fifty thousand, where that building alone would cost six million dollars today for this municipality to build it. So that's about a five million dollar savings.
Yeah, I, I can see it. I just, it's just kind of culture shock.
Well, it is for all, believe me, John, you are not alone.
It's sticker shock.
I, I don't know who was having harder time with the numbers, me or Bob, but I think it was probably Bob. Because, you know, Bob, Bob is a very frugal individual, but I've been in the finance world my whole life, so these numbers are things I'm accustomed to seeing. Am I happy about it? No. You know, I'm sixty-five this coming April, and I'd like to retire in my little house on Park Lane at an affordable tax rate, too.
Yeah, me too.
But I also know that we can't keep asking our highway department to work in the conditions that they're working.
Understandable, understandable.
I think the bottom line is that this is a hard decision, but the town has not made a major renovation or building since I believe the town buildings were renovated and kind of switched around and we got the library since 1995. We've been very fortunate. If you read the paper, and I'm, I'm not raising these numbers to say, oh, look at how smart Sheffield is, but Richmond spent, I think, seven million dollars on their new, new building, which includes their community center. Lee is getting ready to spend an astronomical amount of money. Lennox is getting ready to, I believe, spend twenty-six million dollars for their new emergency fire EMS and police station. I just really believe that your, your town selectmen are trying to do the best in getting this town the best bargain. If we vote this down, and we need two-thirds of your votes to go forward tonight, there's a lot of questions that have to still be answered with the next step and the next step and the next step. But I really encourage you again to think hard about if this building is not purchased, and this isn't an ultimatum, it's just the best deal we've gotten. If we build on that property that you, as the taxpayers, bought for two hundred and twenty-five thousand, that's going to be so many more times than what we are asking for and predict will be this total project. So, you know, again, I think this is an incredible bargain, and I thank the Teppers, who are the building owners, for lowering their price so that we could buy it. And your town and your highway superintendent and your town administrator are going to do the best to bring back a phase two if you approve this tonight. But we can't answer every question beyond a certain level of kind of certainty or uncertainty. We do hope that by the next time we come back, the interest rates will have gone down a bit, because they're a little bit higher, much higher than I would like them now, but I think that's kind of it. Please give this serious consideration.
Just one more question. If we don't use the property on Huen Street, could it be for sale? Can we kick that in?
The answer is yes.
Okay, thank you.
The board of selectmen would then have to make that decision to put that property up for sale, and then we would have to bring it to the voters for their approval to sell that property, because we can't sell it without permission. But certainly selling is an option.
I mean, we bought it for the garage. Now, we're not going to use it for the garage, so maybe we can...
And, and believe me, nobody's more disappointed in that than this board. You know, we didn't really want to spend the money in, if we didn't know about this building. Had we known about this building, we might not have purchased that, that site, because just site preparation alone, we're buying a property that has a well, that has a septic system, that has utilities. All of that would be costs that we would have to pay on Huen Street.
Right. Thank you.
Other questions?
Yeah, George Olean, Foley Road. Renee said that the washing and that sort of stuff for the trucks would catch all, the system would catch all the runoff for the salt and the like, and yet the advisor you've got said, "It will attempt." There's a big difference between will collect it and attempt to collect it. And I think, you know, to say you, you're going to do it and then find out, in fact, it doesn't catch it all, the people around are going to be hurting if the crap gets down into the water aquifer and they ha, they wind up drinking it. My advice to the people around there, test your water at least four times a year. My advice to the people around there, test your water at least four times a year.
So currently, the current facility sits in its own two wellhead protection area. I can understand why Aquarian wants that out of their underground storage fuel tanks there that can leak. There's no designed runoff on the existing site. Everything just goes right into dirt, into the ground. The new facility would be, would be built to current standards that would have to meet all EPA requirements. We'd have to go before the Conservation Commission to get approval for our site design. So everything would be done to the current environmental standards that exist today.
Are they rated to collect a certain amount once you come in, the trucks washed off? Isn't all that water drained into the...
So you're, everything's collected indoors and goes into a sump. That sump then goes to an oil-water separator before then it goes to a tight tank, which is monitored and tested and leak-free, and it's permitted, just like an underground storage tank would be for fuel. Then that salt-briny water is removed as industrial waste when the tank needs to be emptied, brought off-site.
James Kelly, 1899 County Road. I move the question?
The question has been moved. So you were calling the question, which, hold that a second. We'll take a vote, two-thirds vote, use your green card. Those in favor of calling the question? Any opposed? We will call the question. So as we do that, Nicole, our techno-girl over there, is reconnecting for the vote. We have our clickers that you're aware of. A couple of people weren't sure about clickers coming in. We originally weren't going to do a demo, but we will do a very quick demo before we actually do the vote. So our housekeeping's slightly out of order here, but it's because of the presentation and the long discussion that we anticipated. Okay, so we have our test-run question. Just as a reminder, you're going to use two buttons. If you're voting yes, you're going to look at the clicker, and you'll click the 1A button. If you want to say no, then you hit 2B. So it's 1 or 2. So the voting is open. We are ready, and we'll see a new timer. Please vote.
If you're ready for spring.
Is it ready, Nicole? Oh, I thought we were going to see the timer up there.
Next one.
Oh.
The next, the next question.
The next, I'm sorry, I thought, I thought we were getting that. We originally weren't going to demo. Okay.
Are you ready to close it?
I'm ready to close it. 86% are ready for spring. 14% do not want to rake the lawn. Okay, so that's what we will see, and as was alluded by Renee, we do need a two-thirds vote, because we are purchasing and borrowing money. So on the screen, you see the article as it is written in the warrant. So keep in mind, the motion that was made and seconded did put in the purchase amount of $1,050,000 by borrowing. All right, are we ready to vote? The vote is open. 30 seconds. So 85% voted yes in favor of the motion, which exceeds the two-thirds required. So I appreciate that. It is not unanimous, but we do appreciate that. So at this point, I want to thank everyone for coming. I appreciate everyone's questions. Hold it, we're not quite done. I would like to entertain a motion to dissolve the meeting.
Second?
A motion's made and seconded to dissolve the meeting. I hereby declare that this special town meeting is declared. Have a good evening. Thank you.